All right, we're going to call to order the City of Two Rivers City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, November 15th, 2021. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Moving on to number three, roll call. Jamie.
Mark Bettner.
Here.
Jeff Delkey.
Here.
Tracy Coach.
Here.
Bill Leclerc.
Here.
Darla Leclerc.
Here.
Bonnie Shemulinas.
Here.
Larry Thomas.
Here.
Adam Wusky.
Here.
And Jay Remicker is excused.
All right, number four, consideration of any council member requesting to participate in this meeting from a remote location. Jay is not here tonight. He did call in ahead of time but was not going to join us remotely. So we will move on to number five, which is a public hearing, and we have none listed. So moving right on to number six, which is input from the public. Anyone wishing to address the council on something that's on the agenda or you'd like to see on a future agenda, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Podium is my right, your left.
I'm Dean LaRose, 1629 Hawthorne Avenue. I'm just curious as to why all of the city is voting in churches now instead of city-owned buildings. I've lived on the South Side for 22 years, voted at Canick, got moved to the Hamilton Community House. I've been forced to vote here at City Hall. Now suddenly I'm in a church. I don't get that. And my other question to that is, do we have to pay for the use of these churches? Because we're already paying for our city facilities. Thank you.
Do you want me to address that? Or Greg, do you want to address that? Or Jamie? I can certainly do it as well.
I want to address it, and the city clerk can supplement anything if you want.
Sure. We voted on going to the two churches, which is the Abundant Life Church on the South Side and St. Peter the Fisherman on the North Side. And the reason was is we are condensing our polling locations as we invested in Badger Books to speed up the process of voting, and we are purchasing enough for two locations. And these two locations both have big parking lots, they have big insides, and most of all, they are ADA compliant. Canick is no longer an option. Nowadays, they lock schools down so they don't allow anyone from the outside to come on the inside unless you're picking up a kid, dropping off a kid, and then even then you got to get buzzed in. It's not something that they just allow you to walk in and out of. So that's pretty much the reason the council did vote on that. I believe that went unanimous. Jamie, Greg, anything to add to that?
I just would point out that when we had four polling places, two out of the four were at church properties, Grace Congregational and St. Peter the Fisherman. So as you said, it's logistics, it's access. And frankly, these are in the public assembly or hall areas of the two churches. They're not within the sanctuaries. There's no overlap with any religious worship activity.
And I don't believe we pay for them either. I think that was one of his other questions.
We have not paid for them to date. We have offered a small fee if they would like it for cleaning services.
Okay. And they have not taken it to date. So overall, I think it's actually a pretty good deal because they're both in easy-access places, both on the North Side and the South Side. And there's not going to be a whole lot of congestion, so it can allow our lines to get easy in, easy out. All right. Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time? Seeing none, we will move on to council communications. Number seven, letters and other communications from citizens that council members have received. Anyone have anything they'd like to share? Jeff?
You just covered the one that I got.
Okay. I got that same one. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on to number eight, council reports from boards, commissions, or committees. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share from their boards, commissions, or committees?
Personal Finance Committee meeting has another meeting on the 17th this week at 6:30 if anyone from the public is interested in what's going on with financial future for our city. And the Room Tax Committee does meet Thursday at 10:30.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. Anyone else have anything they'd like to share? All right, then we're on to number nine, City Managers' Report. Greg?
There are no invited guests tonight, so we'll move quickly along to the City Managers' Report. Just updates on a number of things. Pleased to say that the closing took place on Friday for the sale of land at the Woodland Industrial Park to Slager Holdings LLC. That is Ian Slager's company that will own the real property and improvements out at the industrial park, which will be the new Home for All Energy Management LLC, a company serving the wind energy industry. The purchase price for the land out at the industrial park at $11,000 an acre, $50,270 received into the city's industrial development fund. The project has an early start permit for footings and foundations. I know, understand Bayland Buildings, its contractor is eager to get started, probably see the steel going up more towards spring, but they're hoping the weather cooperates to get site grading, footings, and foundations done yet this fall, early winter. It'll be a 12,000-square-foot facility as depicted there at the northeast corner of Highway 310 and Woodland. It's nice that was superimposed on a photo when there was snow on the ground. This isn't since Sunday, but it looks about right for right now. And per prior discussion at council, there will be two small wind energy turbines in the Highway 310 side yard of the property to meet the facility's energy needs. Total investment in the project inclusive of the small wind energy systems is about $1.3 million. It is being assisted with a $250,000 City of Two Rivers TIF grant. That is provided that this development generates funds sufficient from the lift in property taxes that comes specifically from this development to pay that over 15 years. The pro forma's look like it should. But that's one of the things we put our new TID-14 in place for out there, to provide development incentives for people making investments in our industrial park. And it's great to see a hometown person who's got, has got extensive experience in the wind energy field making this capital investment here in his hometown. So eager to see work start out there. I just wanted council to be aware, this has been an item in front of the BIDC, which handles our economic development loans. As you're aware, we have a loan in default for the Shores Pub and Grill. The total amount owed the city is in excess of $170,000. We have a first, we had a first lien on the personal property, the restaurant furnishings and equipment. Second mortgage behind Investors Community Bank on the real estate. Investors has owned the property since summer when they acquired it through foreclosure. The city, between the CDA and Investors Bank, we did reach an arrangement for the bank to pay to the city $30,000 for the personal property in the restaurant. So that has been received and deposited back into Fund 290, our industrial development or loan fund. So, and the bank, of course, is in the process of marketing that building. Update on the room tax. This is one of those good news things to share. If you can't make out the fine print on the graphic, I can just tell you that the gold-colored bar is the monthly room tax revenue in 2021. We have complete information on room tax revenue through the month of September. October room tax revenue has to be reported and paid to the city by the end of November. There's each, each month, the lodging facilities have the following month to get their payments in. The good news is that yellow bar, that gold bar representing 2021 continues to, in most months, and September was for sure outpaced prior years. At the end of September, we stood at $198,434 in room taxes, and that, that's already like 50, what is that, $57,000 almost higher than the entirety of last year. And 2021 was the city's best year ever for room tax proceeds. So we're projecting total room tax revenue for the year likely to top $225,000. If it does, that would be a 50% increase over last year, again, which was our best year ever. It's not that we're, it's not that we're not without challenges in this area because our tourism partnership with Manitowoc and the VCB, it looks like it's no more based on events of the last few months. Right now, through the end of this year, we're shipping 52.7%, I believe, 52-point-something percent of our room tax revenue to the Visitor Convention Bureau for area-wide tourism promotion. Will be, as Mark mentioned, that Room Tax Commission meets Thursday. We'll be looking at how room tax revenues are used going forward to promote tourism and tourism development in the city. But the underlying numbers are very positive. That's driven by, of course, in the middle of 2020, in the middle of 2020, gaining a new 55-room hotel, but also the individual vacation rental properties are coming on strong as, as an option for people staying in town and are generating a good chunk of that lift in room tax revenue. So, interesting graphic. This is kind of old news, but I would mention again that we've had, we have four lots that are, with sales to close up Sandy Bay subdivision this month. And actually, we were in discussions over the weekend and today with a local Realtor and local builder on behalf of a couple that's looking at yet another lot up there. So we're just shy of 200,000 in anticipated revenue with land, for this year, with land that is under contract. And with any luck, we'll see at least one more yet this year. The West River Lofts project, which is over on the property next to the Eggers West Plant, was on the agenda for the plant commission last week, last week, Monday, for site and architectural plan approval. Those were approved. This is a 54-unit apartment development proposed by Scott Crawford Company out of Milwaukee. The developers are still finalizing some of their plans and financing, but they reported that they hope to begin construction in early 2022. And they also will own, or they have under contract, the Eggers West Building and have expressed an interest in pursuing redevelopment of that building as well. We're picking up leaves, we're plowing snow, we're doing a little bit of everything right now at this, at this change in seasons. Depending on where the weather goes, we anticipate that fall leaf pickup may very well extend into early December because until we got this real cold snap this past weekend, there were still a lot of trees hanging onto their leaves out there. So whether it's with leaf vacuums like shown in the photo, or whether it's with front-end loaders and plows, we'll be continuing to pick up leaves. The usual rotation. Mondays on the east side, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday between the rivers, Fridays on the south side. You don't have to read all of this one, but, oops, I had revised that. Sorry, that change didn't, didn't stay. Just, no, I'm sorry, it was a different slide I was thinking of. Just remind folks that the winter parking ban begins December 1 and continues to March 15. During that period, parking on the streets or in any city parking lots is prohibited between 1 and 6 a.m. Generally, tickets are $15 if you're parked illegally overnight when snow plowing isn't going on. They're $45 when snow plowing operations are underway. Consistent with discussion at the last council meeting, and we'll get this message out on Facebook as well, that enforcement of the parking ban may be suspended at various times during the winter depending on current conditions, the extended weather forecast, and the status of any snow or ice cleanup following major storm events. If Public Works is out still widening streets after major snowfalls or, or doing cleanup, it doesn't make sense to lay off the parking ban. But I know we heard at the last meeting, council would appreciate holding enforcement in abeyance when appropriate, as was done last winter, which was a fairly mild open winter. Again, last year, we had 45 days out of 105 when the ban was, the enforcement was held in abeyance. So we'll see where that goes. We're getting closer to that time. Recent events, just to remind people that Main, congrats to Main Street on another, the great trivia contest last Friday. The next one's on March in the Community House gym as they look to get back on their regular schedule. But that's a fundraiser for Main Street, and it went pretty well last Friday from all reports. Couple of upcoming activities, promotions for the holidays that the Main Street program is involved in. First of all, they've got a shop early, shop local promotion from November 15th to the 27th, 27th being Saturday after Thanksgiving. If you make a purchase of over $20 at a downtown Main Street business, you'll be, you can enter to win dollars in a drawing for Cool City Cash. You can go out to the Main Street Facebook page or website for more details on that. Seats have to be turned in either by mail or in person by December 2nd for a drawing for Main Street Cash to be held on Friday, December 3rd. And then the Main Street Hometown Christmas Parade will be on Saturday, November 27th at 5:30, basically from 22nd Street down to about 16, 17th Street in the vicinity of Central Park. There is no plan, Santa will be in the parade, but we won't have Santa, as I understand it, in the lobby of the community house this year because that's close quarters and COVID concerns. But the parade is a go for the 27th. In the area of capital equipment, a 2021 capital budget item, replacement loader for the DPW was, is recently delivered and is in service. This replaces a 1999 unit, and the purchase price, hold on to your seats, $245,750. But again, this should be about a 20-year piece of equipment. We have three loaders in the fleet, and they're used extensively, of course, for snow removal. This newest one will, when the new snow blower comes in next summer, we'll do it in the summer, but for the following winter, will be the one primarily used for the heavy-duty snow pickup and other things. So, big piece of rolling stock and a big investment of taxpayer money. Happy to say, out of the 24th, 25th, and Madison Street projects, the last one that we've been reporting on, Madison, is done, all except for spring tree planting, which is the case on those other streets as well. This is the one I was remembering that I highlighted. You really don't need to read all of this, but this, this is the notice that's going out to the papers and getting posted on website and Facebook this week. Just a reminder to folks that now that it's snowing, we do have a city ordinance that says, "Clean the snow from the sidewalks adjacent to your property, including the corner ramps around a corner within 24 hours following a snowfall." And that would be, yes, the full width of the sidewalk because it says clear the sidewalk. Sometimes that's a question, the full width of the sidewalk. And we do want to remind people that the city, the first time around, the city will bill for its reasonable costs of setting up the incident file and report because these are photo documented, they're put on file, for site inspection to determine there's a violation, for producing and mailing the bill, and the labor, equipment, and material costs incurred to clean the snow or ice off the sidewalk. Council made a change to the ordinance late last winter, intending that it apply this year, and that is that for the second and any subsequent violations of this ordinance within any November 1 to April 30 winter season, the owner of the property may be subject to a forfeiture of $150 plus court costs in addition to the billing for snow removal. Because the city's goal really isn't to be the snow removal service for folks that don't pursue any alternatives. The goal is compliance. And if that means you can't, you're unable to clear your own sidewalk, by all means, make arrangements with someone. Our goal is not to use city personnel and equipment to clear the sidewalks. That was a major reason for this change in the ordinance, and there are comparable provisions in other cities around us. So, it's that time of year again. And one thing, Two Rivers is a great walking community. You can get around safely generally, but it does require that we all do our part with clearing sidewalks. Oh, skip. Oh, the turkey. But in any event, City Hall will be closed for the Thanksgiving holiday next week on both Thursday, the 25th, and Friday, the 26th. There's the turkey. And that's all I have for tonight.
All right, and then legislative update?
Yeah, legislative and intergovernmental update. I wanted to share a couple of things. First of all, we did have a visit last, week before last, from Representatives of the Corps of Engineers Chicago office. Two years ago, the Lake Michigan shoreline of Wisconsin got shifted from the Detroit District to the Corps of Engineers, which did have jurisdiction, to the Chicago Districts. COVID kind of slowed down their ability to get out and visit the communities along the Wisconsin coastline. So we did meet with the Assistant Director of Operations and the district planner and some other folks for an introductory meeting about Two Rivers. Our major, major point was the ongoing concerns about the harbor surge and shoaling problem. Surge being how we're so prone to, especially in the fall when you get these storms with winds out of the southeast, just like we had last week, we get terrible storm surge up the harbor, and of course, it bounces off all that steel sheet piling. If there are boats in the water at Seagull Marina, they're often, they often break their moorings. Coast Guard's gone for the season, but if it's in season, makes it very difficult for the Coast Guard, not to mention the commercial fish tugs from Susie Q. So we reminded them that that is a high priority, that we have been trying for the last four years to get an appropriation for what's called a design deficiency study to look at how the harbor situation could be corrected. They seemed quite interested in that. We're also interested to see how, what some of the details are that come out of the bipartisan infrastructure bill that the president just signed today because as a small first step, we understand that may have the $25,000 needed for the Corps to make a determination of federal interest and determine whether the project is appropriate to invest a couple hundred thousand dollars in a design deficiency study. So stay tuned on that. I didn't have a chance today to talk to Senator Baldwin's office, who's kind of been taking the lead on that. But two weeks ago, they said they were waiting on the status of the infrastructure bill. The other lesser concern, but something we talked to the Corps representatives about, is the condition of the top of the north pier, the angled section or wing wall that comes into the shoreline. We've talked about improving access to the north pier for fishermen from the parking area by the Coast Guard. One of the problems there is the busted-up concrete on that wall, and I expect there'll be some follow-up dialogue on that. Jim McDonald shared information as far as our recreational lease for the use of those areas, and we would hope we can get some Corps maintenance money into improving that. So that was, that was a good interaction, and it's good to put some faces with names at the Corps' Chicago office. On legislative intergovernmental, I also just, or Jamie distributed, excuse me, copies of today's legislative bulletin from the League of Municipalities. Some of you may be getting this regularly in, in your emails, and Larry, I don't know if we've added you, but you will be shortly if you don't get it. Of note in this update today with the heading municipal bills, where are they now? We've, I've mentioned at the last couple of meetings, a bill that passed the Assembly mandating certain municipal zoning practices related to multifamily and workforce housing. There were several aspects of that that the League was concerned about, including a provision that cities spend a certain amount of their American Rescue Plan money for workforce housing, and mandating that you had to have provision in your zoning ordinance that allowed housing of a certain density in the community. I want to say it was at least 18 units per acre. Don't quote me on that, but it was, it was a certain density reflective of apartment housing. There were concerns about those being mandates on communities from the state. It does appear that, as is noted here under that bullet point, first one on SB 608, the League continues to oppose the amended version. And while it was forwarded to the Senate after passing the Assembly, Senate leadership has not yet referred the bill to a Senate committee. It has no Senate cosponsors. So right now, it ain't going anywhere in here. Hurry. So we'll keep an eye on that based on feedback from the League and see if, it's, maybe at some point, it will be an appropriate time for council to weigh in with a resolution we could share with Senator Jacques. The other bill, AB 610, SB 630, prohibiting certain property tax assessment policies. There were still some concerns there because it prohibits assessors, among other things, from using the income approach for determining fair market value of properties for property tax purposes. It's noted, they have been referred to a committee on the Senate side after passing the Assembly. However, the committee chair understands the League has significant concerns, and this indicates the committee's not in a hurry to hold a public hearing. So let's keep an eye on those two. Skip over, impact of the infrastructure bill in Wisconsin. I hope we know a whole lot more about that as a staff and can report to you in the next few weeks. Everybody, I think, including some of the people that voted on it, are just learning what's in, what's in that bill. The other, the other thing that I found interesting was under ARPA updates, American Rescue Plan Act updates, there is a move afoot, and the Senate has passed a relate, an act related to flexibility in the use of those funds that would allow for some additional flexibility on what they can be spent for locally. And I see there's reference made to being able to use up to 30% of your ARPA award, which is 1.15 million for Two Rivers, for activities that are authorized under existing surface transportation laws or a community development block grant project. So I'm not saying we'd want to use ours for anything different than the lead lateral replacement where we know we've got a dollar-for-dollar match from the county, but it's probably worth keeping an eye on this if it gives us greater flexibility. Right now, the proposed budget would address 81 lead laterals, 31 of them on 17th Street if that rebuild goes forward, and 50 at scattered locations. It would use up about a quarter, about 25% of our ARPA allocation, or a little over, about $270,000 each from our ARPA allocation and the county match. So I just wanted to share that. It's good reading. Again, if you don't get this in email, we can get you added to the League's email list for our city council. That pretty much is all I had. We continue to try to work things out on what we're going to do for tourism going forward, and that's all I had for tonight.
Anything on the tourism services about the recent meeting with Room Tax?
I don't have anything more.
No, just a placeholder, just in case.
Yeah, Mr. Bettner, his chair, did you have anything?
I missed that, Mr. Bettner, what did you say?
The tourism services, recent meeting with the Room Tax Commission, which was under legislative update. Is there anything to add to that?
Had to be the statewide group. I don't think that was.
Yeah, no, that, that was just, on the agenda, it listed, it listed that locally.
I'm not familiar with what was covered there.
Okay. It may have been a placeholder from last time, no problem. All right, then moving on to the consent agenda. Under A, presentation of minutes, we have one. The recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt the minutes. Under B, we have minutes of meetings. There are six of those. Two under that, department reports for October 2021, we have 11. Three is a summary, summary of verified bills for the month of October 2021 for $2,328,814.07. Under four, finance reports for September 2021, we have four of those. The recommended action is a motion to receive and file. Under C, we have a request to annex a 7.1-acre parcel located in the 4100 block of Riverview Drive, a permanent R1 single-family residence, district zoning submitted by Danielle and Sandra Klein, the property owners, and Patrick Mathias, the buyer. Recommended action is a motion to set public hearing on Monday, December 20th, 2021 at 6:00 p.m., subject to any requirements of the Department of Administration. Looking for a motion on the consent agenda.
No move.
Thank you, Darla. Do I have a second? Thank you, Larry. Any discussion? Yes, Mark?
I have a question regarding, it's nice to see people want to come into the community. I hope this works out. But I'm just curious, as we have additions like this, and I believe that's the corner on the edge of the city, do we normally lay the city of water pipes to the lots that weren't developed and the sewage lines? And how do we, how is that covered from the city expenses? from the city expense to rehook up water and sewer lines? Is, do annexes are added?
This property is immediately adjacent to the city limits. Any property to be annexed has to be contiguous to the city. However, you're right, Mark, the neither city water nor sewer extends along any of the frontage of this property. What Mr. McDonald, our city engineer, shared at the Plan Commission meeting is a willingness, interest of this property owner, who wants to annex it in, to bear the cost of, of, I'll call it very long laterals for both water and sewer service to connect at his expense to the city utilities. One thing that we should address when this comes back to council for action in the form of any pre-annexation agreement would be the city's expectations in the future if we extend utilities, which we may very well at some point in the future, along Riverview Drive, north toward, or someday maybe all the way to double V, and whether there, there might indeed be special assessment for the cost of taking those mains past the property in question. That's, we don't have a final resolution of that, but we want to address that in what comes before the council. It was addressed during Plan Commission last week as at least an open issue.
And that, that was going to take place on the, on their property, not on the public right-of-way, correct?
Oh, but the connections.
The laterals, Jim, I, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that was undetermined at this point as to whether we would allow the, excuse me, the laterals to, to be installed within the public right-of-way, which doesn't necessarily mean under the pavement, but within the right-of-way or outside the right-of-way.
Laterals could be installed in either case, either in or out of the right-of-way. The mains obviously would need to be in the right, public right-of-way. So, one of the reasons it, it's, it could be a very expensive endeavor for the piping is because, for the city, is because the, about three-quarters of the cost or the length of this is undevelopable, meaning there's landfill adjacent to the piping. So there's only one section that's going to be of benefit to anyone.
And not to mention, Jim, I believe the, what disrupts a pavement in the street, it's sort of that highway section too, wouldn't it, for a period of time? And would that be part of, whose cost would that be?
We will only be excavating a hole big enough to put a boring machine in.
Wouldn't you have to dig a hole to attach it to the center pipe in the middle?
Yes.
But if it's running parallel to the, to the, to the street, say, whether it's within the street or, or outside the right-of-way, the thought right now is it would be bored versus open.
Yeah, it's just safer because we're adjacent to landfills.
And those are landfill areas that aren't owned by the city, but used.
The pipe and the boring could be underground, but the connection, I would assume, would have to have some disruption of the street cement or.
We have to dig a hole in order to put a boring machine in. So yeah, there would be excavation at the connection point and the termination point, for sure.
To the extent it disrupts the city, street or highway, that would be a financial responsibility of the private party, yeah, to connect a service.
Could be, yeah.
Haven't had an annexation in a long time, so.
Certainly welcome. Anything else while we're in discussion, council? See none. This is an all in favor. Everyone in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Onto the recommended action for consent, oh, I'm sorry, we just read that. City Council formal items. Number 11. We'll go to A, which is an ordinance repealing Municipal Code Section 10-1-18.5 and recreating it as 4-1-14 entitled Wireless Communication Facilities in the Right-of-Way. If you want to refer to your packet, that is page 136. The recommended action here is a motion to waive reading and adopt the ordinance. Greg or is Brian here?
Oh, Brian is, Brian is out. I, I guess I would just say by way of introduction, this is a companion piece to the ordinance on wireless facilities in the right-of-way that was passed by the council, I think, yeah, two weeks ago. It was noted at the time that we should also, in the, chapter 10, okay. Yeah, because, Jack, help me out here. If we're amending chapter 10, we need a public hearing. Is this meant to be chapter four?
And the, if you don't mind.
Please.
When the small wireless ordinance was adopted, it was numbered in chapter 10. Chapter 10 addresses zoning ordinances. The small wireless ordinance was not a zoning ordinance, however, as was pointed out by Vicki Berg, the zoning administrator. So what this does basically is renumber it so it no longer appears as part of the zoning code. It's the same ordinance, except we're renumbering it to appear in that portion of the code that addresses public rights of way.
Jack, take a look in your packet. I don't think we got the right ordinance here.
Oh, really? Okay.
No, this, this reads like, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't catch this earlier.
What page is that?
136. Yeah, I don't know why that's in there, but I would recommend that this be tabled to the next meeting because the, that the agenda item as it reads, referencing 4114, be tabled to the next meeting. And I apologize, we'll bring back the right.
Let me make a motion to table that. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tracy. Do we have to roll call that then? Or we can do all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. We will bring that back to you at next meeting in its right form. Moving on to B, Cities Man, City Managers Recommended Appointment to the Library Board, Ned Gaiet, to fill the unexpired balance of Larry Thomas's citizen member term on May 1, 2022. The recommended action here is a motion to approve the appointment as recommended by the city manager. Greg, do you have anything on that?
Mr. Gaiet is no stranger to the library board. He has previously served on there. His service was interrupted due to having reached his term limit. Now that there has been an interruption in his service, he's not only eligible for reappointment, but very interested. He was a, he was a major contributor as a member of the board, so I highly recommend him. And at this point, it's, it's solely for the balance of the citizen position that Larry Thomas had held before joining council. So it's now until May 1 of next year.
All right. Looking for a motion?
Also a motion.
Thank you, Larry. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Tracy, any discussion? See none. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries. Onto C, City Managers Recommended Appointment to Advisory Recreation Board, Jason Sharping, for a term expiring May 1, 2024. You can read his bio or his application on page 149. The recommended motion is to approve the appointment as recommended by the city manager. Anything you need to elaborate on, Greg?
I would just mention that at the last advisory rec board meeting, I understand there was discussion, and the, the thought is to take the two high school reps that we have, which was expanded about within the last year, to, to be two positions on the board. Traditionally, there had been one slot reserved for a high school representative, but effectively to consolidate it. There are two young men that are very interested in the advisory rec boards work. Their sports schedules, activity schedules don't always permit attendance. So if one of them is there, they are there and a full voting member. If both of them are there, they participate fully and would share a vote between them. But the, the idea here was to get another citizen appointment, and in part to help address some of our quorum issues. And Jason indicated a strong interest and happy to recommend.
All right. Looking for a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Tracy. Second by Bill. Any discussion? See none. This is also all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to D, Resolution Ordering a special election to elect a council member for a two-year term to be held concurrently with the 2022 spring election. Page 150 in your packet. The recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt the resolution. I think this has to do with filling Kurt Andrews vacancy, the one that Larry Thomas is currently on right now. Greg, anything else you want to add to that?
Just that we've discussed previously, the Kurt, as of next April, would only be one, would have been only one year into a three-year term. Council has indicated a preference for having made the appointment of, of Larry to the council, that it be an appointment until the spring election. And as the city clerk has reported previously, there's, there's a statutory window for scheduling special elections. Special election because it'll be an election for a two-year term, even though it's on the regular election date. We're now within that statutory window, and this would so order that special election for one council seat with a two-year term, which will be on the same ballot as three council seats that are there for three-year terms.
All right, looking for a motion?
Also a motion.
Thank you, Larry. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tracy. Any discussion? See none. Oh, go ahead, Bill.
Make sure everybody knows that that's totally separate from the other election.
Not necessarily. On paper, it needs to be called a special election and a spring election, but the, it's going to be one ballot. There will be.
It'll be two, four people?
No, it'll be two sections on the ballot that are for a council member. One for a two-year term, that is one, and one section, your term, that is vote for three.
That's what he.
That's what I meant, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, either way, right.
Running for the two years can't also run for the three year. That, that was.
I think they can.
Can, but we could run into the exact same situation as we have now. Someone would run for both and win both. They get to pick which one they want, but we don't automatically put the second-place winner into the spot. We would have to have another special election or appoint someone again.
I don't think there's much we can do to prevent that either. I think it's a state statute.
We're stuck with it.
Be nice to have it where you can only vote, opt into one of them and not both of them, but we can't, and I, I think state makes us put it that way as well. All right. This is a resolution, unless we have any more questions for council? No? This is a resolution, so it is a roll call vote. Jamie?
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilinas.
Aye.
Larry Thomas.
Aye.
Adam Wuski.
Aye.
Mark Bittner.
Aye.
Jeff Delkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to E, Audit Services Contract with Clifford Larson Allen LLP, which is called CLA. That is 151 in your packet. Motion to authorize the city manager to sign a letter of agreement to provide financial report preparation and auditing services for a three-year period. Greg or Dave, does someone want to do anything?
You have a memo in your packets from our finance director, Mr. Bois. Of course, CLA acquired a few years back, Schenken Associates, who've been the city's auditor for many years. Nothing's getting cheaper when it comes to audit services. I know Dave Bois, our finance director, has pointed out there are some value-added seminars on things from ARPA to payroll compliance issues and other things that the CLA offers, and it is also subject to a technology fee, which I thought was kind of, kind of interesting. But we have had good service from CLA and do recommend approval of a three-year engagement. Any other questions? Dave would be happy to answer them.
First, we will look for a motion.
A motion.
Thank you, Bill. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jeff. Now, any discussion?
I have one. Was this shopped around, Dave, at all, or do we just go with CLA because that's kind of who we've done in the past?
It has not been shopped around recently, not in the last, geez, probably 10 years or so. It is very much a continuity familiarity kind of a thing. We, the process to go out would be to put together an RFP, a request for proposal from different firms, which would take time, energy and that sort of thing. But for me, my, my recommendation would be to continue with them because of the familiarity with their staff. There's always that certain amount of time between, you know, with the, with the new people to, I don't want to say break them in, but to become familiar with them and to, to develop a working relationship that we've already got with CLA.
Okay. With that said, do you feel that this is a reasonable increase in price?
Yes, and for the, the reasons that are in the memo, as well as, as Greg mentioned, that there's more informational seminars that are coming through now because they are CLA larger, they've got more resources. In fact, I sat through one today on the new infrastructure plan, and they're learning along with us, but they're able to share their expertise with us right away. And also, and I mentioned the, the continuity with, with the, and the familiarity with the firm and the people.
Okay. Any other questions from council?
I have one question.
Yes, Mark.
I believe that this is mandatory too by state and to create our ratings for our bonds and everything else, that we have to do an annual.
Right, we are required to do a, an audit of our, our books annually, not only for the, the bonding, but also just for the Government Accounting Standards Board and that sort of thing. Yes.
Does the state look at who does that audit and kind of, I don't want to say just overlook it more, but feel that they're more reputable and kind of don't look at it as hard? You know, like CLA is a big firm, so when they see CLA, CLA's name, do they feel more comfortable with that, seeing that name versus a smaller person, or does that not really matter?
I, I would think, I, I can't say that it would matter.
Okay.
I would, I wouldn't want to speak for the state, though.
Yep, no, makes sense. All right, any other questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you very much. Moving on to F, this is a resolution approving final design concept for Central Park West. This is page 154 in your packet, the motion to read and adopt the resolution. I will turn that over to Greg to, to read and address anything else he wants to address with that.
I'd like to acknowledge we have three citizen members of the Design Committee that's been working since January on this project. That includes Wendy Kozlowski-Brandt, the Chair of the Committee, Scott Steckmesser, and Kathy Peterson. Thank you for, for being here tonight. The Committee's most recent meeting was last Thursday, and again, outstanding attendance by the citizen members that have contributed so much to this. This, this is an important one, and we've talked about it a lot. That's why I did request to read and adopt, so I'll, I'll bear into it. City Manager's report was short, so this is a little longer. Resolution approving final design concept for the Central Park West 365 project. Whereas the city's 2021 budget included funding for planning and design of park improvements to include a summer splash pad and winter skating rink to be located somewhere in the city's park system, and whereas the city council on December 7, 2020, adopted a resolution creating a special citizen design committee to work with city staff and a professional design firm to develop a recommended location, design, and cost estimates for such facilities. And whereas that resolution further stated that there was, quote, "a general consensus to pursue locating those facilities in Central Park/West for various reasons that included serving both residents and visitors, strengthening the city's central business district, and refreshing this very important public space." And whereas through the hard work of a nine-member citizen planning committee that includes two council members, I, I should have likewise pointed out, Tracy Coach and Jay Remaker are the council members that serve on the committee. Let's see. Yeah, plans have been developed for the transformation of Central Park West into a year-round venue for outdoor activities in the heart of downtown Two Rivers, which has been dubbed the Central Park West 365 Project. And whereas the city And whereas the city council is more recently, on October eighteen of two thousand and twenty-one, authorized creation of a fundraising committee for the project and approved the city manager's recommended appointments to that committee. Community funding for the project already includes a generous three hundred thousand dollar commitment from the West Foundation and ten thousand dollars in donations from local individuals. And whereas the overall design concept for this space initially completed in June, two thousand and twenty-one, has been refined and improved over the past four months through dialogue between the citizen planning committee, other interested members of the community, and the city council, resulting in a final design plan that is now presented for the city council's formal endorsement with recommendation for approval from the plan, planning committee's meeting of November eleventh. Now therefore be it resolved, the attached plan dated October twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-one, and including the following features, which are a new bandstand to be located at the far north end of the park, an enlarged audience space in front of the bandstand, including a concrete surfaced area nearest the stage, and a great lawn extending southward to the center of the park, a water feature intended for enjoyment by children and is an attractive piece of public art, uh, a central pavilion with rental space, public restrooms, and mechanical room, scratch the second word room that appears there, for water feature pumps and controls, an ice rink ribbon to feature artificial ice and thereby offer a reliable and extended outdoor skating season, and a redesigned West Park Street narrowed to serve as a low-speed, one-way street providing vehicular access across the front of the community house while respecting the need for pedestrian safety in this high-use public space is hereby adopted as the final official concept plan for the redevelopment of Central Park West. And be it further resolved, the city council declares its enthusiastic support for the project, which is viewed as an important investment in our community's quality of life and the economic vitality of its downtown business district. And be it further resolved, that city manager and city staff are directed to continue to aggressively pursue grant funding opportunities in support of Central Park West three sixty-five, whose estimated total cost is approximately one point six million dollars. And be it further resolved, that the businesses, organizations, and citizens of Two Rivers are encouraged to consider donations in support of this ambitious and transformational community project as an investment that will benefit Two Rivers for generations to come. And that's proposed for approval this fifteenth day of November, two thousand and twenty-one. As folks know, I'd probably the biggest point of contention or further discussion on the design was, uh, West Park Street. You know, I don't know if I can.
You have one? Okay.
I meant to have a graphic.
Sure, no problem.
Well, let me check, uh, while, while you discuss. So would recommend approval. Uh, frankly, so we can go full bore with fundraising activities and seeking donations, grants from the community, knowing that there is agreement on the layout and the design concept. Uh, not on, not part of this resolution, but we had discussed, you know, this may very well mean not bidding the project until summer next year for fall, two thousand and twenty-two, spring, twenty-three construction. Let's talk about that at a later point, but, uh, this is to look for a formal, full-throated endorsement of the design concept as it's been refined.
All right, and a very good job by the, uh, citizen committee of this project who put in a lot of work and a lot of time, especially on those Thursday nights that probably got kind of long. Um, they did a great job. I mean, we've got something now that, uh, I think everybody's going to like, everyone's going to enjoy. Um, city council has also stepped in and took a look at the project. So it's been endorsed by city council at a previous meeting that said they liked the concept and then further went to the citizen, uh, board in which they, they unanimously approved this project as well. Um, we may or may not have a graphic that we can show the audience. If we do, we'll pop it up on your TV or your Facebook screen. We do not. Okay, so you'll see it in the future. I'm sure it'll be on Facebook tomorrow on the city's website. There's something in the future. Um, right now, we are going to look for a motion.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Thank you, Mark. Do I have a second? Thank you, Bill. Any discussion among council? Absolutely will.
I may, I may be getting closer to the graphics.
We may be getting closer to this graphic, so council, add some more discussion, huh? Even if it's just positive vibes.
Was anything ever resolved of what's going to happen if there's an early ice storm?
As far as maintenance on the artificial.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you get an early ice storm, are we just not going to be able to use it until it clears old, or?
We've had some discussion of that. It's like, like a lot of, uh, outdoor things, there may be a matter of having, finding out what it would take in those, if you, if you know in advance you're going to get some ice to maybe be able to tarp it. Also, what would the weight be if you had to literally pick sections up and thaw it? That was one point of discussion at the last meeting, how much of the section's going to weigh and how can they be stored? Thank you, Terry. I was just going to the city's website anyway to.
Mr. President, if, if you look, if you look at, uh, normally at night, our downtown area is pretty quiet. This new addition will be a lit-up area in the heart of our downtown, which will encourage young people and other tourists and people to come and, and use the facility. And, uh, it will benefit overall traffic in our community and help our downtown businesses, which, uh, could use some help. So I think it's a great step and very positive move.
Yeah, I would agree. And the nice thing about the artificial ice is it's never going to melt. It's never going to thaw, then refreeze, and be all bumpy and rigid-y and not be able to use, kind of like you see in a lot, other municipalities. And even when we had a couple ice skating rinks here in the city, it'd be the same kind of thing. The fire department would flood it at the beginning of the year, but then you'd get your January thaw, and then it'd be all, all catwampus, but this won't be that way and allow us to skate year-round essentially, but probably won't use it much in summer.
We're looking for more time. The improvement to the bandstand, uh, the backing of the bandstand will add to the projection of the, of the sound or the activities that are taking place on this new bandstand and project the sound out. So that's another positive, too.
Not perfect, but we do have, uh, the site plan up, uh, from tonight's agenda attachments to share.
Rick, can you pop that on the screen for TV?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not sharing, am I?
Rick might be able to make that happen. He's a pretty smart guy.
Ah.
Abracadabra.
So if you, uh, if you start from Seventeenth Street at the south, you see it's a narrow, single-lane street instead of being about, uh, about thirty-six feet wide, it would be about twelve feet pavement width when you first come in there, so that is expected to be traffic calming. Uh, as you proceed north, this isn't shown on the plan, but the discussion at the council's work session and at the planning committee meeting last week was that in all likelihood, this would be posted as a fifteen mile per hour speed limit. That's one-five. Uh, and likewise, there's certainly the possibility of putting a speed table, much like down at Neshota Beach, where we have two of them. Not a speed bump, but a speed table, up, over, down. Uh, right about at the point of that pedestrian crossing where the diagonal crosswalk from the park, uh, meets West Park Street. If, if you drive further north, there would be a drop zone to the right there, shown as item thirteen. It's a little fuzzy, sorry. Uh, that would have room for two or three cars to be able to pull over, drop off, uh, passengers, whether they were headed for the, or pick them up, whether they were headed to or from the park or the community house. And as you proceed further north, there would be, I believe it's a total of eleven diagonal parking spaces in the northerly portion of the block opposite, uh, the old Wells Fargo Bank. Uh, some advantages of this design are that if there are special events or heavy use periods, that lower half of cent, of, uh, West Park Street could be barricaded, if council authorizes, without interfering with traffic flow through the drive-through or parking lot of the new business, uh, at the bank location. And, uh, this change in design did not, in the north half of the block, reduce any of the green space or the area shown for public assembly in front of the bandstand. In the southerly portion, yes, it did eliminate some of the green buffer area, where basically the park was extending up to the community house. But, uh, while that buffer area is smaller and there is vehicular traffic on occasion to a deal, to deal with, uh, it did not change the dimensions of the skating ribbon or the ice rib shown there. Thank you. I meant to have that up and then kind of forgot about it. But a lot, a lot of good thought went into it, and sometimes the art of compromise is necessary in order to move things forward. And that's why we're here tonight.
Do we have any proposed, um, or projected annual operating costs on what it's going to cost per year?
Those are, those are part of the ongoing plan. We don't have final numbers on that. And, and likewise, a comparison to what it costs to, to maintain it presently?
Right, I mean, what would it cost in addition?
I think some of those numbers would be in the budget numbers that we're reviewing out of the park and our operation budget, so we could dig into that Wednesday.
It doesn't reflect it at this point, but.
But, but some of the lawn mowing costs and other things will be somewhere.
I think there's a lot of real positive here and, and the chance to even generate some money with, uh, concerts and renting it out for Brian Lee Day yet, and making it even more convenient for them with having our, um, our utility room number four on there. It's the, kind of the brown building. I don't want to say just utility room, but it's, it's kind of a multipurpose room in there that can really help with a lot of that and chances to rent that out for birthday parties and other such things. Um, it's going to be a real, real good thing for downtown and hopefully attract more people downtown, more businesses downtown. And it's going to be good.
I didn't mention it in the, in this presentation, but Blake, our designer, did share that, at least the conceptual plan for that, that utility building, does expand slightly the, the rental space in there. So, you know, it could accommodate the indoor area for somebody's child's birthday party. Uh, he looking at adding a countertop and a sink, so you could do the basics. If, if an organization wanted to have concession sales, not the city necessarily, but say a group during a band concert or special event down there. So it's meant to be space that could be used for a variety of things, not just the concession stand that we went into this with.
Opens up a lot of possibilities. Anything else among council? Did I miss anyone? Oh, okay. Uh, seeing this is a resolution, we will be asking for a roll call. Jamie?
Bonnie Shimilunis?
Aye.
Larry Thomas?
Aye.
Adam Wuhusky?
Aye.
Mark Bitner?
Aye.
Jeff Delkey?
No.
Tracy Coach? Darlo Leclerc?
Aye.
Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to twelve for information only. Greg?
Heard a lot of these before, but just a reminder, city hall is closed next Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving. Uh, there is a budget, excuse me, there is a, uh, city council work session on the twenty-ninth. There's no council meeting scheduled for next Monday, the twenty-second. It's five Monday month, the twenty-ninth. Uh, agenda includes a hearing on the two thousand and twenty-two budget, and I expect most of the rest of that agenda would relate to some summary, uh, overview discussion of the budget as, uh, as reviewed by the, uh, finance committee. Uh, the council does have a regular meeting, first regular meeting in December is on the sixth, that's six P M. That agenda will include action on the two thousand and twenty-two budget. You know about, uh, the regular election in April and the special election. The city clerk might help to help me on this one, but nomination papers for any of the council vacancies are available December one. There's one deadline for, um, anyone running for the three-year terms.
Uh, January fourth?
Which is January fourth, and then there is a deadline of January eleventh for anyone running in the special election for the two-year term. And that, again, is a happy result of the statutory language that applies there. Uh, if you are a current council member, there is also a, a date by which non-candidacy statements need to be filed, and that is Friday, December twenty-four. That means the clerk or somebody to stick around. Or have provision somehow.
It does. It has to be December twenty-fourth. Um, so my suggestion would be if you are not running and you know that, please let me know by.
Yeah, get that in a little early.
Yeah. She's got kiddos.
If, if somebody who currently sits on the council doesn't, fails to make that notification and then doesn't file papers, there's an, as I recall, there's an extension of the timeframe.
Right.
So they don't want to cause that either, uh, if you can avoid it. So that's, if that wasn't a hurry, confusing enough. That's, uh, that's all I have, other than, uh, we do have two matters, uh, to discuss tonight in closed session, maybe at some length, uh, by council, and there is the possibility of action upon reconvening an open session.
All right, thank you. Number thirteen, closed session. The city council reserves the right to enter into closed sex, session per Wisconsin statutes nineteen dot eight-five-one-E when deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Tonight, we'll be discussing proposals received for the purchase of city-owned former Paragon property and discuss, discuss matters pertaining to the sale of other city-owned property. As Greg said, we may be reconvening an open session to vote on something that we discussed in closed session. I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Tracy. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Jamie?
Bonnie Shimilunis?
Aye.
Larry Thomas?
Aye.
Adam Wuhusky?
Aye.
Mark Bitner?
Aye.
Jeff Delkey?
Aye.
Tracy Coach?
Aye.
Darlo Leclerc?
Aye.
Bill Leclerc? Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Um, we'll give a, looks like they got to get some information together, so we'll give them five minutes here.